Just two items. One, I noticed in going through the minutes for this evening, one item that I haven't seen any follow-up on. If the city manager could check on this. In the November 27 meeting when we were talking with the auditors, I had requested details about the variance from the final budget and how it plays out in the fund balance, and Mr. Novak had agreed to provide a reconciliation. And second, I know that there was a second commercial robbery in Old Town on Sunday, and I was hoping, because the police chief was here.
He will be back momentarily. I think he just went to check on something, so...
Okay. I was hoping that he could provide us with any information or update on what the police are doing and any results from anything. So maybe if anybody else has... Oh, there he is. If Acting Chief Corsi could provide an update on the police department's actions with robberies in Old Town.
Sure. We did some crime analysis earlier this month and discovered several robberies up there, of course, in the month of December, as well as, excuse me, matter of reference, upstairs. As well as a couple this month, including one on Sunday, which you probably are aware of. We believe that the robberies in general are related to each other because the suspect descriptions are somewhat similar. But they're also similar to some robberies occurring in Montgomery County as well as Prince George County, including some very recently there. Our detectives are working with robbery detectives from Montgomery County and Prince George County and the district, pulling the information. There were some suspects arrested earlier this month that we believe might have been associated. We're still investigating that possible association, but no concrete leads to date. Our COP people will be working with the business associations, OTBA, and some other associations as well as CDA, to try to get some information out to the business community about what they can be on the lookout for, steps that they can implement in the way they do business that might mitigate losses in such an event and perhaps make their business a little harder target and a little less attractive to potential suspects such as these. We're also undertaking some tactical operations that I really don't want to go into details about, but we are going to address the issue from a traditional law enforcement standpoint as well.
I'm glad you mentioned that, Bruce, because I was going to bring that up also. Do you have any information? There was one particular business which has now been hit twice. Do you have any particular information about why that might be the case?
I really would not speculate about why perpetrators might have chosen to strike.
But I mean, is there anything that we could do or they could do that would make this less likely to happen to them or to another business?
Again, I wouldn't want to speculate whether there's things that they could do to prevent it. There could be things that they might want to undertake that would help mitigate it or help the police to be able to make apprehensions in such a case, and we'll be discussing that directly with the businesses.
So you'll be talking to them-
Oh, absolutely.
-about some of those issues?
Absolutely.
How about some of the other businesses in Old Town?
The same type of information we will want to make available through the Old Town Business Association to all businesses. They tend to have a similar characteristic in that they're small businesses, what we call maybe mom-and-pop type businesses, that are less likely to have invested in significant security measures. And we think that that might be the trend that's developing in this particular spree.
How about more visible police presence, particularly since this seems to be a problem right at this point?
We are anticipating devoting more resources to that area, but in and of itself, preventative patrol probably has a very small impact on this type of crime being perpetrated. Pretty quick crime. You know, it's a crime of opportunity. It's the type of thing that the perpetrators could be laying in wait. They could see a patrol officer come by, and the patrol officer was to leave the area, then they know that it'd probably be a little while before they come back. So we think that preventative patrol will probably have less of an impact than actually catching these perpetrators.
Okay. Is anybody else...
Could you just say anything about the current staffing levels of the department?
The general staffing levels of the department are better than they have been in recent times. Currently, with the hiring of the chief of police, we have two sworn vacancies on the department, which is down from a high of seven during summer. In reality, as that hits, you know, the rubber hits the road, we have a couple officers that are in the academy, so it will be quite a while before they are counted as free and independent bodies on the street. We have two officers who are just now finishing up field training programs. They were hired earlier in the fall. One is actually, paperwork's been processed, he's actually cut loose from field training. The second, we anticipate that to happen sometime this week, that he'll finish his program. So we're in better shape than we have been at this point. The new chief, of course, will be able to consider reassigning some of these officers to some of the specialty units, which is where the vacancies generally have been. Particularly in a current table of organization, the vacancies are in the COP team and in the VNI team. Patrol teams are generally pretty well-staffed at this point.
Is there anyone else who wants to just comment on those issues, too?
I do appreciate your efforts. I know that we are in between Chief Klemmer and Chief Rakucci. I'm very interested in seeing what we can do to raise the awareness in our new chief of the concerns that this community has and this being the predominant one. Is there... I know that OTBA, the Business Association, is holding a meeting on Crime Prevention and Safety, February 13, I believe. Is there a chance that we could get our new chief to attend that? I know he's in transition right now.
I think that's probably unlikely because, obviously, he's in the process of relocating, and based on my discussion with him last week, I think it's unlikely that he will be up here prior to his start date of February 20. I think currently, Acting Chief Corsi and I spoke about this earlier this evening, Councilwoman Roston Lane, is I think it's important that the police department go ahead and make contact with the Business Association this week, given the heightened level of concerns in light of recent events. I did intend to ask Chief Rakucci to meet with the Business District as soon as possible after he joins the city staff.
Okay. And...
I can say also-
Sure.
...in personal interaction with Chief Rakucci, that he's very much on top of trying to pick up on things. He's given me a laundry list of resources that he needs to get before he comes on board. He and I have been talking almost daily since he's been announced, and he's already getting a wealth of information, so he should be hitting the ground quite, running at quite a good pace, I think.
Great. I appreciate you passing on as much as possible to him. And something I just put on my calendar today is the Tacoma, D.C. meeting on crime prevention on February 27. So that may be an opportunity for him to introduce himself to residents on that side of the line and further the conversation.
I just wanted also to add, a little bit separate from this issue, my thanks to you for your, how well you've handled the department in this time between our old police chief and our new police chief, and we very much appreciate your keeping a firm hand and keeping things going in this time of transition. Thank you.
Just trying to keep it rolling in the right direction.
Thank you.
Kathy?
I'm sorry, yes.
I'm glad to hear that you're reaching out to the other jurisdictions in the air. I think this is really important, and it also points out a kind of chilling reminder of this that I read in the paper the other day where the man who clubbed the former New York Times reporter over the head in the district, and the man later died, Mr. Rosenbloom, I think it was, he was, the attacker was recently sentenced to life imprisonment, and in a paragraph that would have otherwise gone unnoticed in the New York, in the Washington Post story, it said that that same individual had been involved in a robbery in downtown Tacoma Park. So, you know, the point being, some of these people are really dangerous predators and that they do move around the region. They were operating in Washington, D.C. They did the robbery in downtown Tacoma Park and probably responsible for other ones, too. So keep up the good work with the intergovernmental, interdepartmental communication. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor Porter. And Councilmember Berry made a nice segue to my question, and it's really kind of an ambush of you because Councilmember Williams invited you to the table this evening. But I was recently appointed to be the chair of the Council of Government's Public Safety Committee, and as the new chair, I'm trying to set the agenda for the coming year. And so I was going to ask my colleagues, but since you're at the table, I'll ask you also for any suggestions that you have for areas that the Council of Government should be looking at for new legislation that would help policing on a regional basis. And that's certainly not something for off the top of your head or my colleagues either, but I would be very interested in getting input from our council and from you or any other people in the Montgomery County listening to cable that have interest in public safety.
I'll talk about two issues that are kind of recent that have been involved in. One is the Capital Area Links Project, which is an umbrella computerized system that will link together different departmental RMS systems. It's a project that's been kind of important with the COG Police Chiefs Committee. I think seeking funding for that at a federal level is important. There's ongoing costs associated with that that generally hasn't been funded out. So anything in that realm, I think, is very valuable to law enforcement. It ties into what Councilmember Berry was saying, that many of these suspects, you know, they don't stay in one neighborhood, they don't live in one town for their entire life. They do commit crimes in different cities within the suburbs or even greater area. So I think that's very important. Another issue that we've dealt with kind of on a small basis over the years is the ability of jurisdictional authority. And I don't know that that's probably a much difficult thing, much more difficult thing to wrap your hands around from a legislative fixing standpoint. But there are some problems, particularly when you talk about petty issues or minor issues, misdemeanor issues, that are difficult for law enforcement agencies to deal with within another jurisdiction. I've had some conversations with our city attorney on that, and I think that there's a COG attorneys group who's also trying to grapple with that same issue. So, you know, I was kind of heartened when I had the conversation with her that somebody was looking into this and that if that's something that we could get some headway in over the next couple of years, I think it would be beneficial to the capital league.
I appreciate those comments, and like I say, it's an open door, so if you come up with other ideas. And on the linking, I'm familiar with using that at the federal level and how valuable that is, and I think it's fantastic that's moving down to the local level. COG's been instrumental in doing that.
There were a lot of territorial issues on that, as you can imagine, and people not wanting to give up control over their information.
Oh, that's just begun.
They grappled with rather well, as I find.
I was talking to someone today about it, and I think it goes right down to the investigator level. You know, they don't want to show what's in there behind their coat.
Right.
Okay, but I thank you. And I also invite my colleagues to send me any of the information you have, where we need new policies and new legislation to help improve public safety at the regional level.
Okay, thanks for that thought.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Thank you. We appreciate it. Any comments on any other topics? No, this is a very important one for us to deal with. Okay, we will move on to the adoption of the minutes. We have in front of us four sets of minutes, three of which were included in your packet and one of which arrived by email over the weekend. I don't know. I had a chance to look at the fourth one. Any requests to remove the fourth one? Okay, we'll go ahead with all four. This involves the adoption of minutes from November 20, November 27, December 4, and December 11.
Move a person.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The minutes are adopted. The next item is the public comment period. This is the time for comments on items that are either on a work session agenda or not on items not on the council's agenda this evening. If you have comments on the appointment of judges for the special election, we will provide a separate time for those comments. I would ask when you come forward to make your comments, if you could identify yourself and also keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
Mark Kessel, representing a number of landlords in Tacoma Park. Rent stabilization being the primary issue on the agenda tonight after the appointment of judges, I'm not going to go into any of the comments that I wrote that were part of the package for this evening.
We did receive those, yes.
I wanted to address one substantive, one procedural thing. Procedurally, a lot of the impact of whatever the council does in terms of new legislation is going to be in the details. There are going to be a lot of things that, at first blush, look like a good idea, but you realize, well, it could be done a different way that would be more effective, or an opportunity missed. Issues that no one may have thought about, like what happens to petitions that are in transition when new rules go into place. And I would urge the council to circulate, make available copies of any draft legislation at least two to three weeks before the council even has a first reading on it. Because if you don't do that, nobody realizes an opportunity to provide detailed comments and suggestions. One of the reasons why I submitted the three and a half pages of comments that I did in connection with December 11 public hearing is I could have gone on for 10 or 15 pages, but I don't think anybody would read that many pages, and I'd certainly fall asleep reading it probably myself. But when it comes to the legislation itself, it's going to, I think it's only appropriate to allow people plenty of time to provide detailed comments. The one substantive element I do want to address is to emphasize the importance of the provision or suggestion in Dr. Barr's preliminary report, where he talks about net operating income maintenance from a base year. And that goes hand in glove with getting rid of the capital improvement petition process. That, I really think, is going to be the biggest single issue that you address. And the importance of it will be in how you calculate what net operating income is appropriate, what increases and so forth. It really, despite some of the wording in, I think, the preliminary report, has nothing to do with return on investment. And if you ask Dr. Barr that, as I did, I think he'll tell you that. It's not about return on investment, it's about maintaining the operating income from a base year. As far as I'm concerned, if it increases revenues to landlords, that's one of the things landlords are looking for, so they can afford to maintain their buildings properly and get a reasonable return on their investment. But as Dr. Barr points out-
Can you wind up?
Yes. As Dr. Barr points out, people buy their units, some bought them in 1975, some bought them in 2005, and it would be good if we're based on actual investment, but there's no proposal on the table that's linked to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that's a good suggestion about circulating any legislation ahead of time. I'm assuming we will do that. I'm assuming that the process will work, that after the council has made sort of the policy decisions, we will, the staff and Dr. Barr will work together on coming up with the legislation, and the council will have at least one work session on the legislation itself prior to bringing it up in a legislative session for an enactment. So I do think it will be available before it's brought before the council for enactment. And I think in any case, we should make sure that it does, because I think your point about people having a chance to look at the details is a very good idea. Are there any other comments?
My name is Sabrina Baron. I'm the president of Historic Tacoma. I just wanted to respond to Councilmember Stevens talking about folks watching at home on cable. I'm an RCN cable subscriber, and since before Christmas, the Tacoma Park Channel has been screwed up on RCN, the picture's jumping up and down, and I don't think it's a problem. I'm in my set, and as I said, it's been that way since before Christmas, and I've intended to call the Communications Department and simply never got around to doing it, but you might want to ask somebody in the Communications Department to look into that, because the picture has not been working since before Christmas, literally. What I intended to talk about this evening was an item that was on your agenda last week, and I would have spoken last week, except I didn't know about the item until it came up in your work session, and so I take the opportunity this evening to speak about the proposal from city staff that the city of Tacoma Park requests an exemption from the countywide moratorium on approval of new development projects. I think this is academic, and I come from the school of if it ain't broke, you don't need to be fixing it. And I would really like to see Tacoma Park, that prides itself on progressive ideas, be philosophically and practically in support of this very important measure that our county is undertaking on these very important issues. As most of you know, there's been some discussion over this past week that has included County Councilmember Elrich, and he points out, this is not a moratorium on building or development, this is just a moratorium on new project approvals. And having dealt with several of these projects in recent years, I also find it difficult to believe that anybody could propose a project that would be through the approval process to the stage of being prepared to build by the 15th of August. County Councilmember Elrich has also pointed out that the moratorium was intended to last longer when it was originally proposed, and the county council has already scaled it back to end in August in order not to inconvenience anyone. So I would like to strongly encourage you to please support the county philosophically and practically on this measure. It's very important with the problems we've had in the county, and I will invoke the biggie, Clarksville. You know, we really need to step back, slow down, take a deep breath, and have a look at these projects, and I would ask you to please support this moratorium and what the county is trying to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe that the decision that the council made last Monday evening had two parts. One was to agree with the staff's suggestion on exempting a small area in Tacoma Park. The other one was to support the moratorium in general, and I believe both of those things, actually, I think supporting the moratorium personally is more important, but the council did agree to go forward with both of those, and I think that the testimony that the staff will give does have both of those things in it.
I see a little inconsistency there, with all due respect, and I would really encourage you, you know, if everybody begins to ask for an exemption, you know, then we end up with something of no substance at all. And again, I think it's very important what the county's trying to do, and it would be really wonderful to see a place with the progressive values that Tacoma Park professes to have, to be as supportive as you can be and not ask to be exempted from a very important process. Thank you.
If I can just add one quick thing, which is that I think all we were doing was saying that the proposed legislation already provides an exemption for areas within an enterprise zone and within a defined metro development area, and it seemed like the areas that we were asking about kind of fell under those same types of concerns but were not in need of one of those. And I would say that Councilmember Elrich was surprised when I pointed out that Old Town was not in a metro area, because he was thinking that that was already under the exemption.
All right. Is anyone else who would like to speak at the public comment period? All right, seeing no one else, we will move on to our sole item under our regular meeting agenda, which is the first reading of the ordinance... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm trying to push the meeting forward, Barb, and I seem to have left you out. Apologies.
Well, if the council would like, I could certainly give the report at the end.
No, why don't you go ahead and do it, ma'am.
Just a few quick items, and I'll keep it brief. On the community center project, I want to let the council know that the elevator work over the weekend went very well. It did not take anywhere near as long as we had feared it might, so it basically means it was done quicker and at a lower cost to the city. They actually wrapped up by mid-afternoon on Saturday. It was one of those things we couldn't really predict, depending on whether we hit rock or not. Just a few other items. As the council is aware, the city participated in a mediation process back in May with James F. Not Construction, the contractor for Phase 1, and Powermax, which is one of the subcontractors to James F. Not. As you may recall, we've been, you know, kind of working on a settlement agreement to try to resolve those claims as well as any other claims that Powermax may wish to bring forward in the future. After working with legal counsel, I did execute that settlement agreement last week. There are two components of that. One is a payment by both James F. Not and the city to basically resolve the claims that were the specific subject of the mediation and also to preclude Powermax from bringing any future claims. The other portion of the settlement agreement basically constituted the payment of any retainage being held back by the city on Powermax's work. We did work with the project architect and other members of the design team. In accordance with the terms of the settlement agreement, the city did have the right to withhold an amount from the retainage for any work that is still outstanding from our perspective, that is solely at the discretion of the city. That payment has been made, and amounts were withheld for the outstanding work that Powermax has yet to do. Just a few other quick items on the community center project. On, I believe it was Friday, Suzanne Ludlow had sent a draft of a letter to the council that staff was recommending be sent to County Councilmember Praesner, who is the chair of the Fed Committee. I saw that the mayor had weighed in with some comment earlier this afternoon. If any other council members had any suggested changes to the draft that Suzanne Ludlow circulated, I'd appreciate it if you could get that to me at your earliest convenience. As she indicated in her email, the Fed Committee is awaiting information from the city before it would consider the city's request for any supplemental funding. So if you could please get Suzanne any comments you have, perhaps by noon tomorrow, I'd appreciate it. Along the same lines of the gym project, I had sent an email to the council last week outlining a suggested public process. The majority of the council members have weighed in and just wanted to confirm this evening that the council was amenable to having a public forum. Actually, we were recommending having two public forums, just to make sure that there were some alternative dates, so as many community members could attend as possible. We were looking at Saturday, February 10, and Sunday, February 11. Staff's recommendation would be that the session on the 11 be held here at the community center, and that the session on the 10 be held at one of the churches along New Hampshire Avenue, just to provide, you know, if people had transportation issues, that hopefully more people could attend if we held it in two locations. If the council's comfortable with that, we'll proceed with going ahead and, you know, including an article in the newsletter to that effect and start working on the citywide mailing that the council had supported. Obviously, we are on a rather tight timeline if the council does decide to pursue funding through this year's bond bill process. The other piece of the timeline that staff recommends is that we schedule a work session on February 12 so that we can report back on the results of those public forums and to give the council an opportunity to talk about how you would like to proceed at that time. Is the council comfortable with kind of that rough timeline? Okay. The last item I just wanted to mention is obviously it's been some time since I've done a financial report on the community center.
I'm sorry, could I... My understanding is that there's a President's Day holiday, but it's not that weekend. Am I correct about that?
It's the following weekend.
Correct. Thank you.
Sorry. The last thing I have is just to let the council know, it's been some time, obviously, since I've done a financial report on the community center, that's mainly because not a whole lot has been happening, some minor items. I am in the process of preparing a report and hope to get that either to you next, for next week's meeting or the week after that. So if that concludes my report, unless there's any questions the council has.
Are there any questions for the city manager? Thank you, Barb.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Now we will move on to our regular meeting agenda, which consists of one item, which is the ordinance appointing judges for the January 30 Ward 5 special election. We have in front of us a proposed ordinance. Would someone like to move this ordinance?
Someone will. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Are there any council comments on this ordinance? Are there any public comments on the ordinance? Just wanted to thank the four individuals that are named on this for agreeing to be election judges for the special election. All right, since this is the first reading, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. The ordinance passes at first reading, and we will have it up for second reading, I think, next week. We're trying to get this done as soon as possible so the city clerk can move forward with all the preparations for the election. The next item, and the one which is going to occupy most of our time this evening, is the continued discussion of the revisions to rent stabilization, and we're very pleased to have Dr. Barr with us again this evening, as well as our staff. And we're very pleased to have Dr. Bar with us again this evening, as well as our staff, as well as staff members to talk more about the proposal. And we very much appreciate, Dr. Bar, you being able to give us some more time. You know, this is, your attendance has been quite helpful, and as we get more and more into the nitty-gritty, I'm sure it will be even more helpful. I wanted to start, if I could, with just a little bit of sort of why it's organized the way it is, and then, I don't know if you have any introductory comments you'd like to make, Sarah. But Sarah and I sat down and sort of went through the various proposals and tried to order them in a way which is sort of rational and logical, one thing going following from another, and also to try and deal with some of the thornier items first, so that in case we don't get finished with everything and we continue next week without Dr. Bar present, we'll be dealing with some of the less sort of difficult issues in his absence and deal with some of the more difficult issues while he's here to assist us. And so, that's the reason for ordering it the way it is. I've also asked Sarah if she can sort of help us, help me, by sort of letting us know as we move through this how our time is doing. So, I mean, obviously, the council will, I won't attempt to cut anyone off, and people can talk about this as long as they want. But I think that, you know, it would be helpful for us to know how we're proceeding in terms of time. So Sarah has agreed to help inform us as to how our time is moving as we go through this. Did you have anything you wanted to say, either Sarah or to Dr. Bar?
The only thing I wanted to add to the mayor's remarks before Dr. Bar speaks is that, as the mayor noted, there are two specific items that we're not prepared to talk about this evening. First is the establishment of a fee for the rent stabilization ordinance. The second is an ordinance requiring full disclosure of that stabilization, and that is in the works right now, and that will probably be up for discussion at your work session meeting on January 1st.
Because you're moving forward to that. Isn't the other one, the utility cost item?
Utility items.
Yeah. And that's because you're working on that, right? You received direction to proceed, and you're working on what the details would be?
Initiated preliminary research on that. We'll be coming back to later as it develops in terms of additional costs and stuff.
And in terms of the disclosure and real estate transactions, you're moving forward to that, and you're going to have language on that soon.
That's been drafted and will be presented to the council on the 20th.
Okay. I think since there was a suggestion that we get, we make public draft legislative language, maybe we could get that up on the website before that it goes for the work session. It would be helpful, I think, to do that. All right. Dr. Bar, did you have some introductory comments you wanted to make to us?
Yes. Is my speaker on?
Yes, I think it is. If you want to move it directly in front of you, that'd make it a little easier, but I mean, in front of you in terms of, yeah, in centered is what I meant. Thank you.
Okay.
The staff are very used to the vagaries of our speaker system, microphone system.
I just wanted to mention, the last few days, I've seen some data which has been pulled together comparing the rents in effect in 2000 with the rents today, and this is very valuable. I've been going through that and still digesting it. But just make a few points. One is that for a high percentage of the units in the city, there is a gap between the rent actually charged and the allowable rent if there's a vacancy. So in effect, now you have a system where there's some kind of rent increase allowing vacancies. And I guess that's surprised me coming from the outside, that such a high percentage of the units.
Excuse me, Dr. Bar, could you speak up? I can see that some members of the audience are having trouble hearing you.
Okay. Yeah. It surprised me that such a high percentage of the units in the city, the rents that were charged were under the allowable rents. It was much higher than I would have expected coming from the outside.
Could you say what the percentage was again?
About a thousand units were either at the allowable, and now I'm getting the whistle.
I think it's because your paper's out.
We apologize. We have a very old sound system, and it has seen better days.
And so about a thousand of the units are at the allowable rent ceiling or within $10 of it, and most of them are at that group price. And then, a significant number have rents, let's say another 500, are between $10 and $30 of the allowable rent ceiling. So you still have another, you know, over a thousand that are more than $30 under the allowable rent ceiling.
Okay, thank you.
And so, the other thing, as I looked at the percentage increases, rent increases in the past five years, and about 1,200 units have had a total rent increase under 10%, usually just under 10%. Also, based on the annual increases, a lot of units have had small increases in addition to that as a result of the capital improvements. And I found that 1,900 units had total rent increases under 14% within the last five And then you have a small group that have had substantial rent increases in the last five years. 142 units have had rent increases from 20% to 29% within the last five years, and 193 units have had rent increases of 30% or more.
30%.
Yeah. But I'd say, looking in terms of the total rent control stock, only a small percentage have been significantly impacted by the capital improvement increases, as far as having large increases as a result of the...
So the ones over 30% were ones that got capital improvement increases?
Well, even, no, I'd say, no, I'd say even the ones that got over 10%.
Okay.
I'm not sure about that, but certainly the ones that got over 20%.
Okay.
And as I say, this is just based on a preliminary look at the data, and a lot of things haven't been figured out at these, you know, huge spreadsheets. And also, I looked at the year the tenant moved into the unit, and 350 tenants moved into their unit before 1995. And 1,000 units the tenant moved in before the year 2000. So a high percentage of the tenants are recent movers. 500 moved in either in 2005 or 2006, and 500 moved in in 2004. So I just wanted to throw out this information to give you an additional overview.
Okay, well, that's helpful. If I could just sort of summarize, it sounds like, one thing is that our tenant population tends to be generally quite mobile, that people move in and out. And the other thing is that the increases tend to be variable, quite a bit, it sounds variable. And as you noted earlier, and also in your report, most of the people who are taking capital improvement increases are the property owners with bigger properties, more unit, larger unit properties. So presumably, those are the ones who are getting the larger percentage increases also over the past five years.
Right. But I emphasize that it's a small group that have gotten a substantial increase.
Right. But you're saying there's some variation, it's only a small group that's above that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Along the same lines, when you look at the turnover rate, did you look at that in relation to the building size?
No, that's a good question. I think that can be easily looked at.
Right. I think that'd be significant.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anything else you wanted to bring to our attention?
No.
One of the things that I might ask you to do is, as we begin into a subject, might ask you to very, very, very quickly summarize your recommendation to us, because some of the people who are watching this may be watching it on the cable channel and may not have the paperwork in front of them, and may not have access to your report immediately. So that would help to, I think, get it off to a quick start. Before we get started, I just wanted to say a couple of things. One is to thank everyone who came to our public hearing in December, and the people who provided written comments to us. And I did listen very carefully to your comments, and I have read all of the written comments that we received. And I very much appreciate the thought that went into both the written and the spoken comments, and I do take this quite seriously. The other thing is that I wanted to suggest to the council some criteria that we might keep in mind when looking at some of these proposed changes to our rent stabilization ordinance. The first one, which is simplification, the council's already agreed on. The second one, which I think is sort of obvious, is fairness to both landlords and tenants. And that sounds, it sounds sort of common sense, but it's going to be, I think, very difficult to do. One of the things that struck me as I was reading through the written comments and also thinking about the spoken comments is that in a number of these issues, a writer or the speaker would have a sense that the council was dealing with a question which had an obvious answer, although with different speakers, they had different ideas as to what the obvious answer was. So I think this is not going to be easy to do in a way which both sides consider fair. But the other thing, which I think I'm going to, as the more I've thought about it, the more important I think it is, is I think we need to have a defensible rationale for the kinds of things that we do. I think one of the weaknesses of our current ordinance is that over time, as things have gotten adjusted and fine-tuned, sometimes we got away from what was the original rationale. And I, there are places that I think I've got some questions of perhaps some of your suggestions, or some of the staff's suggestions in terms of the rationale, and I need to sort of understand what rationale we're using and think about the rationale as well as what we're doing. So that's one of the things that I'm going to be focusing on as we go through the discussion. But I wanted to lay that out, so people sort of know where I'm coming from with some of the questions and some of the thoughts that I have. Anybody else? Yeah?
Thank you, Mayor Porter. I think one of the things that struck me through these conversations that we've had over the several months that we've been talking about this is that, as Mayor Porter says, you know, landlords say they want to be able to charge a fair rent, and tenants say they want, you know, a system that's fair to them. And yet, none of us have talked about what is fair. What, you know, as a tenant, I would say it would be fair to me if nobody charged me any higher rent than I'm getting now, and if the property was better maintained than it is now. As a landlord, I would say, you know, a fair rent would, or a fair system would be one to let me do whatever I want to and charge as much as I want to. But I think that when we're talking about a control system, it would be helpful to understand what each side feels is really fair, because I think as a council member in Tacoma Park, I'm not willing to say that market rate is what my goal is, but yet I do want to be fair to landlords. And, you know, the other side, I think we need to talk about what is fair to tenants, because I think that even with the system that we have now, it hasn't always been fair to tenants. They've had to live in some conditions that were not really acceptable for people to live in. So I would like to see that some of our discussion focuses on, you know, what are we really trying to accomplish, and what is, what is fair for both sides.
We are proposing to start with a discussion of the exemption of properties based on the number of units. And I don't, Dr. Bar, I don't know if you could just give us the 32nd version of your proposal?
My proposal is that the exemption would be based on the physical characteristics of the building, rather than on the number of units that somebody owns, because the number of units that somebody owns is totally something that can be manipulated, and I don't think it's a rational way to do it. If you have any basis for exemption other than the number of units in the building, you could have one, I'm not recommending this, I'm mentioning this as an option, you could have one based on owner occupancy of the building, because some cities provide exemptions for owner-occupied buildings, you have less than a certain number of units. And if you do that, I think you have to make sure it's bona fide owner occupancy. But I'm not suggesting that, I'm saying that's an alternative, but basically to get it out of this manipul- standard that can be manipulated and doesn't have a rational basis, I think.
Okay, thank you. And I noticed that the staff had made a recommendation to us earlier that would go as high as exempting buildings with three or four units, four units. Currently, the law says that if a property owner owns no more than one property, then that property would be exempted. If a property owner owns two or more properties, they fall under rent stabilization, which is the problem that Dr. Bar is bringing our attention to, that you feel that that's not a good standard, it could be manipulated, we ought to base it on the characteristics of the building itself.
Isn't the current one on number of units?
Yes, just as a clarification, it's not the number of properties that you own, it's the number of actual rental units?
I should have said units. The number of units, yeah. Thank you for that. We've just got some information here that the staff has given us showing the percentage of buildings and the percentage of units by the number of units in the rental facility. This is one of the issues that I did some thinking about, because I think Dr. Bar is right that we need a sort of a simpler standard. But I think we need one that's based on some rationale and not, the problem is, whatever number of units we set, if we said two-unit buildings are exempt, then all the owners of three-unit buildings will besiege us and say that their proper problems are exactly the same as the problems of two units. If we set it at three, the owners of four-unit buildings, if we said 20, it would be the owners of 21-unit buildings. So I really think that it's not just a question of a number, it's a question of a rationale. I think we have a pretty good rationale for the one, which is that we were trying to exempt units in which, for example, a homeowner left town and for a period of time and instead planned to come back and maybe went overseas and rented out their home for a short period of time until they got back. We felt that these property owners probably would be not as experienced as people who, part of whose income came from renting property, and also that they're not good candidates for affordable housing anyway, because most of these properties are renting well above affordability limits. And so we exempted those properties. And it seems to me that if we move to the notion of the number of units, I would suggest that we stay with that rationale, which I think is still a good rationale, and exempt only single units. And I guess the question that I had for you, Dr. Bar, was whether it would make sense to do something like exempt properties in which there's only one rental unit. For example, in a two-unit building, if the owner lives in one unit, there would only be one rental unit.
If I might interject a moment. The information that we've handed out to you, the very first page of the mayor's indicated, is a breakdown by Ward of the various rental facilities in the community, broken down generally by categories as far as sizes. So for example, in Ward One, there are 71 licensed, single-family or single-unit properties, whereas in Ward Three, there are 80, and in Ward Four, there are only nine. If you go, and it shows, if you read across, it shows what percentage that reflects of the overall licensed rental properties in Tacoma Park. That's all of the properties that were licensed at that particular moment. If you turn to the second page, we've eliminated the Ward reference. That was to give you a kind of a sense of how much of the property that's in your Ward is rented, and done it more on a citywide basis. At the moment that this data was collected, there were 3,800 roughly licensed rental units, and of those, 3,100 were rent stabilized. And again, it's broken up by size, so you can see that of the, of all the single-family rental properties in Tacoma Park, only 12 of them are subject to rent stabilization. The balance of them, which is over 270, or 280 units, are not subject to rent stabilization. And then at the very last column, what I've done is done a cumulative impact. So say, for example, you decided to exempt just single units. That would have a negligible impact in terms of the, an increase in the number of properties that would no longer be subject to rent stabilization. Whereas if you were to do two units or more, that would exempt 146 units altogether. That would be the 12 single-family plus the two units. It would have a reduction of roughly 4% in the total number of rent stabilized units in the community. in the community. So as those last two columns, as, the further you go down, and the larger the size of the unit, there's a larger and larger impact. So you can kind of see that by picking six out, that you'd be, and exempting units with six or fewer units, you'd be basically exempting 20% of the currently rent stabilized units. This, these numbers do not, these numbers reflect the exemptions that have already been approved based on your recent adoption of the ordinance back in July. And then, at that point in time, right now, we have 359 units, if I remember correctly, that are, have, are now exempt from rent stabilization that weren't prior to October 1st.
In the report that we got, it says as of 2004, 697 units were exempt.
Sure, which report you're talking about?
I'm talking about Dr. Barr's report.
These numbers, these numbers are all collected at different points in time, and...
Are you including, like, accessory apartments in your table?
They should be included in here. As far as the licensed number of units, accessory apartments are not subject to rent stabilization. So they would not be included in the number of properties that are, of subject to rent stabilization right now in the single unit.
The, the information that we've got is that as of 2000, it sounds like the number of rental, of licensed unit, of exempt units has been going down, if both of those numbers are correct.
Not only the, the overall number of licensed rental properties in Tacoma Park are going down.
Correct. It looks like it went from...
So the data, the data may, the data may have been collected at different points in time, so the numbers may not correspond. But basically, the, the numbers in the, on the second page of the chart give you a sense of what the distribution of the rental properties are by size, and what the, what the general impact would be in the terms of the current number of rent stabilized units. So if the numbers don't match exactly, the intent is more to give you a sense of what the overall impact is, or how much of the rent stabilized rental units in Tacoma Park are three-unit buildings.
So, so the, the information in the table you just gave is, is as of what date?
January 2004, if I remember correctly.
So it's approximately the same time as this, the information in the report?
Right, but it was, yes. But again, it's, it's to give you a general sense of the distribution of the rental facilities in Tacoma Park, and the breakdown by size of those units that are subject to rent stabilization.
Sarah, while Mayor Porter's thinking about what you've just said, I'm trying to make sure that I understand this chart, which we just got tonight during the meeting. And do I read this correctly, that it looks like somewhat just less than 50% of the rental housing in Tacoma Park is not controlled, is not controlled by rent stabilization?
Less than 50%?
Where are you looking at?
Are you talking about buildings or units?
Um...
Majority of the properties in Tacoma Park are subject to rent stabilization. There are roughly about 250, you know, of single-family units that are not.
I was mixing, uh, award specific with an overall total, never mind. Thank you.
With the exception of the properties that were recently exempted under ordinance 2006 36, or 31, the majority of the properties that are not subject to rent stabilization at this point in time are single-family homes, accessory apartments, individual condominiums, individual townhouses, just properties with one unit in it, and, and that particular owner does not own anything else.
But, and, but also the, the prop, properties that have been exempted because they were, they had an agreement with the city, or they...
And that's roughly 350, 360 units, and that's as of October 1st of this year.
So they, they, they would be reflected in this chart or not?
I've already pulled them out of here, so...
Okay, so that could be the difference between the two numbers. It could be that you pulled out the additional ones. But it looks as if, as I'm looking at this, the difference between the two, the chart shows 3180, the report says 3827. The difference is approximately 600. Some of that could be the units that you pulled out. But it looks like, it says, it says as of 200, 2004, 697 of the 3827, well, actually, that comes to about, you're looking at the, at the additional units in this chart, not the ones, not, not the ones that are already exempted.
The last two columns are intended to reflect what impact it would have on the overall rent stabilized units, if you were to make a decision that any single unit would be no longer subject to rent stabilization, or any four-unit or less property.
Okay, so you're saying that if we exempted 697 of the 3827 units already, the remaining, I'm doing this quickly in my head and I can't promise it's right, the remaining 3180, this is how many of the remaining ones would be exempted under the current, under a current proposal for exemption by number of units in the building? Is that right?
I must confess to being totally confused.
I think, I was confused, but I think I just followed her.
Oh, then I'm lost.
Okay.
So if, if I could just take a quick stab?
Why don't you take a quick stab at it?
The, the last column on the second page of what you provided is the cumulative impact, and that's looking at the 3,180 units, which if you go back to the two columns before that, that is the total of the rent stabilized buildings, 3,180. And then you go back, two columns before that, the total is 3,821, which agrees with everything on the first page. So that that cumulative impact is only looking at the ones that are currently under rent stabilization. All of the ones that are exempt, for whatever reasons, are already out of the chart when you get to the end of this one.
Correct.
Does that answer your question?
It, it's just, that, that's what I was trying to say. There's a difference of 50 units, but let's just let that go, because that's, I, I think that that solves it. So if I'm understanding, then this chart shows the additional units over and above the ones who are, that are already exempt, would be exempt if we did this. So there's still almost 700 units that are exempt on top of these numbers.
Correct.
All right.
Great, that was so good. Let me try again. Let me try again. If we look at the second page...
We've had enough time to talk about this, we have to go to the next slide.
I'm going to the second page. And the way I read this is that 51% of the buildings in Tacoma Park are single units? 51% of the rental unit...
51% of the licensed rental units, in total, are in buildings with a single unit.
Okay. And if only 12 of those are controlled by rent stabilization, then we have nearly 50% of the buildings that are rental buildings in Tacoma Park that are not controlled by rent stabilization.
Correct.
Okay.
But only 8% of the overall units.
Gotcha.
That would be, if you, if you use, no, you're talking about the first page. All right, okay, I got it. Trying to keep this simple. Yes, indeed.
I appreciate that.
I can't, I can see I can't do this discussion without a calculator, so...
I think, as we've talked about in the past, it's helpful to get this material before the meeting starts.
But it's helpful to have it regardless.
And again, it's just intended to give you sort of an overall impact, or understanding what, what the impact would be on the currently rent, or currently regulated licensed rental properties.
Okay. Putting these two together, it looks like 18% of the licensed, in, as of 2004, 18% of the licensed units in Tacoma Park are already exempt from rent stabilization. That's base. And so we're talking about how many over 18% get exempted.
Now you confused her, that was great.
So the 18% comes from this number in the, in Dr. Barr's report on page...
The difference between 3,821 and 3,180.
Yeah, 3,827 and 3,180. Yes, but if you, if, okay, I'm looking at page three, Dr. Barr's report, background, Roman number one background, large A, the rent stabilized housing stock. The last sentence of that paragraph reads, "As of 2004, 697 of the 3,827 rental units licensed by the city were exempt from the rent stabilization ordinance." And, and that's based on city staff report, memo, memorandum, rent stabilization codification, et cetera, et cetera. My calculation is that that's 18% of the licensed units. And, and what the information you're giving us is of the non-exempt units, right?
The last two columns would be what the impact would be on the currently exempt, or excuse me, the currently regulated rental...
Currently non-exempt units.
If you were to make a decision, one way or another, is whether or not you wanted to exempt certain properties because of their size.
And, and if I can just point out very quickly that it, in the discussion, it may be helpful to, like, add percentages together, we just have to remember that they are working percentages on a different base, therefore, it would have to be calculated.
Right. And, and we don't necessarily need to do that. I guess the proposal that I'm putting on the table is that we exempt, and I, I was in, sort of in the middle of, of finding out whether it was feasible to base the exemptions on the number of rental properties in the, in the building, rather than the number of units in the building. For example, that would mean that if you had a building with two units, one of which was not being rented, it would count as a building with one rental unit. When, when we, when we license properties, we know what building they were in, and we know how many units are in that building, right? So if there's a building with two units, only one of which comes in for licensing, we know whether the other one is being rented or not. Presumably, we look at that because we want to know if we need to license that.
It's an ongoing challenge. We have some properties, for example, we've got four-unit buildings, where the person on the D lives in one, takes over a second unit, and then moves in a family member. And so you could have four apartment buildings, or four apartments in one building, and only one of the units would be considered rental because of the occupancy of the other three. The challenge we have with that is monitoring it, because people move in and out, and don't necessarily notify us of that. And it's difficult when you're going out and doing an inspection to determine the specifics regarding the actual occupancy of that particular unit.
But in order to license the unit, don't we need to know whether it's being rented or not?
We have licenses for units that are not being rented, but they're maintaining their license. It's not, or property might not be occupied at the moment, they've decided not to rent it for a while, because they want to do some renovations, they're thinking about selling the building. We have a lot of licensed rental properties where the units themselves are not actually being rented. Does that answer your question?
Okay. So it sounds like we, we sometimes license units that are not being rented.
Correct.
But at least we shouldn't be not licensing units that are being rented. So we may know more than the number of actual rented units, but we're not supposed to know fewer, we're not supposed to be licensing, licensing fewer than the number of actual rented units.
That's presuming we have all of the information and that it's been reported.
Okay. But we have to assume that that's the case, otherwise, there's no point in relying on our, our database on licensed units.
More often, an owner tells us that, that they're taking a unit out of the rental category because a family member, or they've moved into it. There's a number of properties where an owner says they're occupying two of the units, and, which leaves them possibly with one unit as a rental unit, and therefore exempt from rent stabilization because there's only one unit in that building.
Mm-hmm.
As rental.
Right.
But there's no, there's no real way for us to determine if what they're telling us is accurate.
But, but that's not a problem of this proposal, that's a problem you have anyway in tracking units. I have had people come to me and say that they combine two units so that they could have a larger unit to live in. But that's, that's a problem of, of licensing rental units, that's not a problem of a particular proposal.
Well, it wouldn't be a problem if we exempted owner occupied from rental.
Well, supposing you have a 100-unit building that happens to have the owner living in the unit, you can exempt it?
I think it would be...
That's what we're talking about.
It wouldn't be a problem if we based it on the physical characteristic of the building, than saying that, you know, properties with three, three units would be under rent stabilization whether they're occupied by an owner or not.
I, I get, all right, the proposal I would put on the table is that we only exempt single-unit properties. I think single-unit properties are very different from other kinds of properties. And I was trying to get to a point where two-unit properties, like a duplex, that the owner lives on one side, would be exempted, but I guess that's not, doesn't make it feasible.
I guess I heard two separate suggestions. One is that it be based on the characteristics of the building, rather than the ownership of, of the buildings. And I can see where ownership could be, as you say, circumvented by just having different ownership entities own different buildings. And, so I, it seems to make sense, it seems to make life easier for the staff to base, base it on just the characteristics of the building. And then the, the next question then is how many units should be exempted?
Right. And I'm suggesting one.
And on that particular question, I have to recuse myself.
Because you would be affected.
Potentially.
The, the reason for, for saying one is that I think single-unit properties, single-family homes, are different in substantial ways from multi-unit properties. And I'm, I'm, this is one of the issues where I think fairness becomes a consideration. Because I think we have to be fair to small property owners, but I'm also worried about the, the percentage of people who live in these small properties who could find their rents overnight going, you know, astronomically up to market, if we went ahead and exempted a large number of additional units. So I think we have to weigh carefully, I'm a little bit troubled that even under the current law, we have 18% exempted, and any numbers we exempt go up above 18%. So if we go up to, you know, if we exempt single units, we're exempting, according to this, 12 additional ones. So we go from 697 to 709.
But if I can point out, I think I'm correct in remembering what you said on the ones that are currently exempt, that you added in the ones that were the result of ordinance 2006, whatever, which was this under other restrictions, so it's not, they're not in market.
Correct.
But...
Or some of the units within the building...
Could be.
Could be, but the building as, as a whole is considered affordable.
Right. And I'm suggesting that we not make the number of units that would be switched from under rent stabilization to not under rent stabilization, because that would be a tremendous increase for the tenants. And I'm suggesting that we minimize that. And the one way to do that, I think, would be to keep it 12 units. That means 12 families find their rent going from rent stabilized to market.
Could I ask a question that would get at where I would want to land on a number on this in terms of size of building, number of units? Can you just remind us, I believe you talked earlier in the discussions about kind of the, the difference between, you, you reach a certain point in building size where kind of ownership changes, management changes, if there's, if there's a, if you see a dividing line at any point in the size of buildings for the type of operation it is, and how, kind of how professional the ownership is versus individuals, that kind of thing. I thought I remembered it being more in the, I don't know, four-unit, six-unit, there was some number that I thought you all mentioned.
That's true. It's generally small, the owner lives in the building.
Not necessarily that the owner lives in the building.
No, nothing to do with it.
No. But that they manage it themselves.
Yeah.
Did you say that's true?
The four, yeah, four to six, the owner...
The four, yeah, four to six units, right.
I would say so.
Somewhere in the four to six unit size, and then above, so certainly above six units, it's going to be a different type of ownership, a different type of management than under six.
Yeah, it depends, it only has a certain percentage of landlords who owns the building. For example, on Lee Avenue, 115, 117, that's about 30 units. The owner of the building is in partnership with his brother, and he manages himself, which is beneficial. And, yeah.
But that's, that's fairly unusual, or that's usual?
That's, well, fairly unusual, because the bigger, the bigger building, which is over 100, always have a management company. So it really depends.
There's not a whole lot of buildings, I think, that fall within that, like 15 to 20 category. There's a number that have like 30 to 40 possibly. I'm thinking of some on Houston, they're, you know, it really varies, because there's buildings with 36 units possibly that are owned and managed by the owner, but they have like a maintenance person who handles all of that work. So it really does vary. I'm not sure that we would be able to say anything about those mid-range buildings.
Yeah, because I just, the other comment that I just wanted to make briefly was that I think where we need to go is definitely the size of a building, and we shouldn't be getting into the occupancy of the units, because then that just leads to gaming the system. And that's what makes it so terribly difficult. So I think anything, anything that just makes it clear, there's no gaming of the system, it's a number of units in a building, and that's simple.
Can I ask another question? Do we not have situations where an owner will own several, say, four-unit buildings? And they will be professionally managed or not, but they will own more than one of the small buildings?
We can, we can pull that in. We have that information.
I guess I would go back to the issue with the rationale, in terms of picking a number that we can defend on the basis of something, some reasonable rationale. And I think the rationale that we've used for exempting the single, the single-owned, the situations in which an owner owns just one building, I think makes a certain amount of sense. We can also apply it to buildings that consist of just one unit. There is a distinction, there's a clear difference between a single-family home, managing a rental single-family home, and managing a multi-unit building that people buy clearly as an investment property. I mean, you could buy a single-family home, and you could end up renting it as your family moved on, but people buy multi-unit buildings as investments.
I think there's a fair amount of six-unit properties that are owned, as you said, a lot of the properties on Roanoke are six units.
And they're owned by?
Yeah.
By one property owner?
Yeah. What, in the interest of time, my sense is that you're in general agreement in terms of basing it on the configuration of the building, as opposed to the ownership itself. And we'll come back to you with additional information regarding how that might break down in terms of the ownership of a collective, of a group of buildings within a certain category.
Well, I would just be interested in the council's reaction to the notion of exempting only single, single-unit buildings, only single-family homes.
I'm not going there yet.
Yeah, I hesitate to rule out exempting other buildings. I think that exempting single-family homes makes sense, but I also think that if someone has an accessory apartment in their own home, that that should be exempted as well.
It's already exempted, we exempt accessory apartments already. All accessory apartments.
You know, let's speak in those terms.
Okay, good. All accessory apartments are currently exempt and would continue to be, we're not even talking about putting them back in. Even if somebody had, what's the limit, two accessory apartments, or one at this point?
I think it's just one.
My definition would be one.
Okay, and Prince George's it was two, so sometimes I get a little confused. So somebody who has an accessory apartment is out just because it's an accessory apartment.
I would think someone who lived in their home and had two rental units in their home would be more similar to the family with the accessory apartment than a 100-unit building.
But we can, we can pull that information together for you and bring that back at the next discussion.
Okay, you're suggesting that we move on, since it's about, it's almost nine o'clock, and we said we'd take a break at nine, this might be an appropriate time to do it, instead of jumping right into the next discussion, which is a very long one. It's the whole underpinnings, the whole theoretical underpinnings for the whole process. So maybe I suggest that the council take a brief break now, and then we come back very quickly for the next item.
Okay.
There are a couple of quotes that kind of tie into zoning ordinance.
Since we're no longer talking about exemptions, I think Councilmember Siemens could return if he wants to, but I'm not sure where he is.
He indicated that he just stepped out momentarily to attend the meeting of the Ritchie Citizens Association, and he would be back shortly.
Okay.
Are we back?
We're back.
If I can just ask a quick question.
And I'm going to take Sarah's suggestion, and we're going to gather some additional data on this.
It's very short, which is, has the exemption for the number of units always been what we have now?
No. Based on what Linda's told me, originally it was four and under units were exempt from rent stabilization.
Yeah, in, prior to ADA. Because when I started in ADA, they had just passed, our council had just passed an ordinance exempting, I'm sorry, changing it for four and under were exempt, or less than five is what they called it, were exempt. And then they changed it to what it currently is.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We'll continue to try and see what we can do here. And the next discussion would be on changing the structure of the rent increase process to set up, I think this is actually, let's see, this includes setting up a 100% of CPI, doesn't that include in that, Sarah? 100% of CPI, repeal capital improvements, and the establishment of the uniform interest allowance.
It does not include recommendation number one, which looks at the annual rent increase allowance, but it does include recommendations three, five, and nine. Which is basically looking at how to structure a process by which a property owner can petition to increase their rent above the annual rent increase allowance.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a few comments. I think that even though three is listed separately, I think that it's related to doing away with the separate capital improvement increases. Because on one hand, you're holding the rent increases under the CPI, giving owners another avenue. And on the other hand, you're giving, if you change the annual increase to 100% of CPI, I think it's appropriate not to have separate increases for capital improvements. If you don't have separate increases for capital improvements, then what happens is these costs are considered within the fair return process, because basically your definition of fair return is net operating income as of a prior date. And the way to maintain net operating income is a rent increase that covers cost increases plus allows for some designated growth in the net operating income, which is the income after operating cost.
So in order to cover all of the statements that you just made, we do have to include your first recommendation about 100% CPI. Is that my understanding?
Yeah.
And so this would be a basic, let me just make sure, let me repeat this back to you to make sure I'm understanding this. It would be a change to the basic structure of how we do rent stabilization, where we would set the annual increases 100% of the CPI. We would eliminate the capital improvement petition process, and we would change what we now call the hardship petition process. You had a better name for it. So that it would be essentially a way of property owners who are not keeping up, who are not maintaining net operating income to maintain net operating income. Did I sort of get that basically right?
That's correct.
Okay. So that's a different way than we do it now. It would be definitely simpler. And to me at least, when I looked at your proposal initially, those, all of those things hanging together, I think makes for a simpler and in many ways fairer system. So I would agree with your recommendations on that.
I also agree.
Carrie?
I'm sorry I missed part of this discussion, but I just wondered if you had done any comparison between the way it was in 2005 to the way it would have been under this scheme.
Well, I think in the last, yeah, I have some numbers in the report. Let me go back to that section. Okay. Since 1992, rent increases have been limited to 70% of the percentage increase in the CPI. And resulting in allowable rent increase of 31%. This is on page six of my report. And during this period, the CPI all items has increased by 44%. So over this period, since 1992, it would have made a difference of about 13%, which is about 1% a year.
Okay, so for those pets who are listening tonight, what would that mean in their rent?
If this had been adopted in 1992, well, let me say this, it would have made a 13% difference in their end. But prospectively, I think it will make a difference of about 1% a year, more or less. Because the CPI has been increasing in 4% or less in recent years.
So if the rent is $500, that would be $5, right?
Right.
But I think part of what we ought to take into consideration is there is a fairness issue here. I was quite impressed with the analysis that you did on who gets capital improvement petitions. And your assessment, which you furthered in the work that you did and presented to us this evening, that most of the capital improvement petitions go to relatively few owners of relatively larger buildings, which suggests that there is a differential between what property owners of larger buildings are getting and what the property owners of smaller buildings are getting in terms of a return on their investments. It also means that there's a distinction between the rents that the tenants in smaller buildings are paying and the tenants in larger buildings are paying. And in both of those cases, it doesn't seem that we should have such a wide differential. There should be more fairness across the board. And I think the way to do that is to give everyone smaller increases, rather than having the people who are good at working the system get the bigger increases, and the people who, the property owners who are good at working the system get the bigger increases, and the property owners who are less good at working the system get littler increases. It seems to me fairer to give everyone a small increase, rather than some people get very big ones and some people get very small ones. It seems to me that's what is one of the better arguments for going to a system like the one that you're proposing. Is there anyone who disagrees with Dr. Barr's group of recommendations?
Group? You mean the whole?
He's.
This particular?
We're talking about three, five, and nine, which is basically having this, one, three, five, and nine. Although presumably, we could talk it to death, although I'm not suggesting we do. It's the CPI. The CPI would be. I'm fine with the suggestion you made.
And actually, I'll add that after you finish discussing these issues, there are two other small, other issues within this group, but they're separate from.
Okay. I don't see any dissension on this group of things. I think this is probably what most people have been sort of thinking about. These have occupied a lot of people's thought. So what were your two smaller issues?
Okay, one is that there'd be a uniform, now capital improvements would be considered within a fair return petition, a maintenance and net operating income petition. And my suggestion is that for the amortized expenses, and my suggestion is that there be a uniform interest allowance for these expenses, rather than it be dependent on the interest of the particular owner. And because I don't think how much rent increase somebody should get for a particular improvement should depend on how their, in particular, can find access.
I think you made a good argument, both rationally and legally, for why we should do that. I mean, I thought your legal support on that was quite strong. Any disagreement? Okay.
And then the other, which is really minor, was add a second alternative base date now of 1990, is that if an owner wanted to use 2,000 as the base date, they'd have that option in a fair return petition.
And what was the reasoning behind picking 2,000?
Well, I'd say up to 2,000, you clearly, you were regulating the rents for a number of years. Since 1988 for almost all of units, and you didn't have many capital improvement increases before 2,000. So I'd say if somebody couldn't keep that level I had as of 2,000, they should be able to petition based on that. And also, many owners might not have records going back before 2,000.
I would think if we do that, I know one of the difficulties, and maybe Sarah can speak to this, is with the hardship petitions that we've gotten, is there is a lower amount of information that needs to be provided for the older years.
Under the current system, a property owner can elect to do a flat percentage of the income that's generated. And we have the information available on the annual rent report. So if someone comes in, Jean just pulls the rent report and make a determination of using that formula as to what they can establish as their operating expenses. So that's what's happened in the past, when people don't have their, all of their records, when the property's changed hands.
I know there's been some concern expressed by tenants who are in buildings that are currently undergoing the hardship petition, a feeling of frustration that being just based on percentage, that they have no evidence that that's justified.
That's a challenge when, that's a challenge under the current system. It's also a challenge when the property has changed hands, and the previous owner has not transferred over the information to the current owner. It's a fairly standard formula, though, in terms of 40% of operating.
Well, it might be.
Dr. Barr, could you move your paper off the microphone? It sounds, as I said, it doesn't pick up voices very well, but picks up paper crackling very well.
I'm learning.
It's my understanding that formula was established because it was fairly typical of rental properties in this part of the woods.
And if I can just go back to my question about why 2,000 for a minute. It sounds like you were saying 2,000 because there weren't, one reason was that there weren't any capital petition, capital increase petitions before that. So it sounds like, therefore, it's kind of an equalizer, because nobody had done that yet. But on the other hand, it meant that if capital increase petitions were meant to try and adjust and deal with an inequity, it was when everybody was suffering equally?
Right.
And so why would they want to pick that as a base year when they were all suffering?
Well, the percentage, not the number, right? That you're trying to come to, isn't that correct?
Well, what I'm, somebody has a right, when you say they are suffering equal, I'd say it was a, you can't say that it was more than a fair starting point. And you have this alternative going back to 1990, and that's, you know, one method. And then it's giving somebody a second, you know, methodology, and saying, well, you know, if you've even lost since the year 2,000, you can base it on that. I mean, you could go back to an earlier date, but I think then you'd even have more problem with people having the records.
Right, right.
It's not a perfect system. It's another alternative.
I can see it as an alternative. I just haven't quite gotten my head around what makes a year better than another. And your explanation for going to before the capital increase petition makes a certain amount of sense. But then when you flip it around, it speaks to, not the only thing it speaks to, is everybody's in the same boat.
But it, one of the problems that this is trying to address is property changing hands?
Well, it doesn't, mortgage payments are not taken into account under this fair return system.
Okay, but it addresses the lack of.
Oh, the lack of data.
Yeah, the lack of data. I'm sorry, I just changed horses in the conversation.
Well, it helps. I mean, there are properties that have been changed hands since 2,000. It helps. It's not an absolute cure to the problem. And actually, this makes me think, I'm thinking out loud as you're talking about this. I think one of the things in the disclosure ordinance should be a notice to apartment purchasers that they need the prior operating expenses of the prior owner.
Which they should be getting anyway.
Well, they might only be getting them one year back, rather than back to 2,000. And I discover as a reality, sometimes owners get them, sometimes they don't, sometimes they don't care.
And sometimes it may not exist anymore.
Well, that, somebody should have their records at least back five years now for tax purposes. It's not a guarantee.
Okay. Undoubtedly, we are going to spend some time talking about the details of what the hardship petitions look like. But that's probably a discussion for when we get down to the specific language level. But I think we're probably going to have to talk a bit more about that. The goal, I think, is to make it simpler and more comprehensive than what we have now. But to take into account some of the concerns that the capital improvement petition process covered, but not the smaller things, only the larger ones. Is that the goal there?
When you say only the larger ones, you mean only the larger increases, or?
Yes. In other words, someone would not file hardship petition if they're, they were a little bit below where they felt they would be. Presumably, they're doing it in the case of where there's a large problem that has been created by, for example, extensive repairs to something, or a large maintenance problem that they had to cover. That's the only way that they would.
Or large increases in utilities.
Or large increases in utilities.
Yeah, I don't think they're going to do it for a very small amount of money.
Right. So the concern being that people who are investing a lot in their property all at once are going to, because of the loss of the capital improvement petition process, are going to suddenly not be able to recover that. The notion is that they would be recovering it through the hardship petition process, if in fact that large investment put them in a position where their net operating income were declining significantly.
Right. Yes, and the other thing that makes me think of is I think may, in this type of change in the law, maybe there should be a grandfathering petition provision that if somebody did their capital improvements as of a certain day, let's say, you know, before this was adopted, they could still go under the old system. I hadn't mentioned that before.
Okay. Do we have any capital improvement petitions in process right now?
Yes.
Well, that would probably be something that we, the council should also take a look at. Maybe we should look at, you know, how many and how big they are and that kind of thing. I'm sorry.
Property owners have an opportunity to apply for capital improvement rent increase in advance of the actual completion of the project. So we only have one or two that are at that stage. We have a number of other capital improvements where they've already made the improvements that are in the pipeline.
Okay.
But the ones where they applied for the advanced reading on it, they're moving forward with their projects?
Correct. Okay. I think we're to the fourth recommendation. Assuming that we do the first one, do the CPI increase the way you suggested, which I'm fine with that.
People seem to be in general agreement.
Yeah, I think people were agreeing with that before. If we move on to your fourth recommendation, which is the increases upon vacancy. Do you want to just give us the 30-second version?
Well, what I, yes, I suggested, because the rent increases have been limited to 70% of the CPI for so many years, that one possibility is you could allow some kind of increase on vacancies, for example, 5% or 10%. And there's no right answer to what the policy should be. And you should limit the frequency of those increases, so an owner doesn't have an incentive to churn the unit over, you know, frequent turnover. And also, I'd say the other qualification would be is if somebody has significant capital improvement increases, maybe they shouldn't be eligible for this type of increase for a certain period.
So in your mind, the rationale for limited increase upon vacancy is the fact that their income may not have, because of the limitation on the annual increases, their income coming from the units may not have been keeping up with inflation. Is that?
Right.
If that's the case, then why would this be more than a one-time increase?
Well, you, let me say, if you select 5%, the gap is about 13% over the last 13 years. But I'd say you certainly could limit it to one time, and all the rationale for, you know, allowing it two, you know, two times, or whatever. And I don't think they're magic, you know, when you ask for rationale, I don't think they're magic correct answers. But there are rationales for different approaches.
So you could say 7% the first time, and 7% the second time, and that would get you to some point in the future where it about equals the 13%?
Right.
So what I hear you saying is that the rent stabilization. So what I hear you saying is that the rent stabilization law has over-controlled the rental prices?
Well, let me say, there's a lot of debate, the day when you say over, there's rationale also for increasing the rents less than a hundred percent of CPI because it's a particular type of, rental property is a particular type of investment, that's why I'd say there are no magic answers. And there's also rationale for increasing it by a hundred percent of CPI. I guess when you say over-control, it's.
Well, I guess, you know, it gets, it gets back to your number one.
Right.
On the hundred percent of CPI is, you know, this proposal is making the assumption that's number four, that we, that we have wanted to allow rent increases at a hundred percent of CPI. And I'm not sure we've decided that about the past, and I'm not sure that's the right play, that's the right percentage to be using for the future.
Right. And so also, I think because, we still don't have the data on this, because of the utility cost increases, the seventy five, seventy percent of CPI might have really severely limited income increases or stopped them, but I don't know. I realize I'm giving a multiple answers to.
Yeah, and, you know, it's a bowl of spaghetti. And unfortunately, it isn't something you can just eat one strand at a time, it's all intertwined and needs to be looked at that way. Because when you look at the, at the utilities then, and how that affects the, the consumer price index, and then you're saying that, that the utility costs can actually be part of one of the factors in, what do we call the hardship petition, it's not that anymore, but it gets, if we're allowing for it in a hardship petition, but then we're also, it is also a factor in the consumer price index, and we're allowing a hundred percent of that, we're allowing a double jump for utility and price increases.
Well, except whatever you, it's taken into account the CPI, but then in the future, it will be taken into account in the rent increases and there and off, they're taken in the, they're a factor in determining what size hardship increase people can get. And the fact if they're getting bigger annual rent increases, they're, you know, hardship increases will be less justified in a sense, because you're comparing the rent increases with the cost increases, and I said, a annual rent increases.
Yeah, and as you said earlier, you know, this is kind of talking without a whole lot of processing. But doesn't it mean then that if someone worked a day to put in for a hardship petition, which includes the utility, I mean, the expense of utilities, that then if we were to do this vacancy de-control.
Right.
To allow them to make up for the loss of increase that they didn't get in the past, that they're, they're gaining some of that for the, the utility increases from the past?
Right, okay, I see what you're saying, that if they get the hardship increase.
Right.
And then they, they don't need the, another type of catch-up mechanism.
Right, they're already catching up with that.
Okay, I see what, I'd like to think about that.
Yeah, I know the feeling.
That, I think that is an interesting issue. The other issue, of course, is that some of our property owners include utilities in the rents, and some of them, the tenants have already paid utilities, which is one of the reasons that I think pulling the utilities out as a separate issue is a good idea, because it will apply to some of the property owners and not to others. But, I mean, Terry makes a good point, and I think that argues for putting some restrictions on who gets the, the partial de-control payments. Maybe you, you mentioned restricting people who've recently gotten capital improvement petition increases from taking it. I think implicitly in Terry's comments, there would be other conditions under which somebody who, for example, got a large utility increase, and then through another mechanism, might not be eligible for something like that. Since your proposal is that property owners apply for it, it's not something that's automatic, they have to apply for it, we could put those kinds of restrictions on it without it causing more, I mean, you guys would still have to deal with it anyway, and we could put restrictions on it without, it would make it more difficult for you to decide whether something was eligible, but it wouldn't mean that you have to look at more things than you otherwise, more units than you would otherwise have to look at.
I assume you apply for the utility surcharge?
No, I'm talking about the, if we, if we did decide to go for a partial de-control at vacancy.
So they would have to apply for that?
Well, that's Doctor Barr's proposal.
They certainly, yeah, have to apply and report it. That would, and let me say, in terms of the budget, that's a significant amount of work because units become vacant individually rather than, you know, buildings.
So that, we would be required, we would be required to keep track of how many years it had been since they got one before, if they had got one before, whether they'd gotten hardship petition increases.
Right, right. I mean, one way you could differentiate in the vacancy increase, depending on whether the owner paid for certain utilities, for example, if they paid for heating, it could be a higher, you know, slightly different percentage than if they don't pay for heating.
I think this is, this proposal sounds like it needs to come, be thought through some more and come back.
Yeah, that's, some of the, some of the notions that you've presented, I think, are kind of interesting, and maybe we can refine them further and come back to some of them.
And speaking of coming back, Mayor Porter, we had talked about feeling comfortable with Group A, whatever that was, three, five, and nine, and then we talked about the annual rent increase after this most recent discussion. I would like to leave open the question of the percentage.
All right. Okay, put that on your list of things that we're not coming to a final decision on.
And also about the frequency of the increases, what is the rationale, both the theory and the practice of the frequency with which the increases would be allowed when the unit becomes vacant? I understand that the District of Columbia, I think, allows for a ten percent increase upon vacancy of, of a unit on a, on that basis, in its annual, rather than every, you know, in an interval of some kind.
Well, I think the problem is if it, let's say somebody can take a vacancy increase every year, they'd be sure to look for people who would stay a year. And, you know, because somebody could turn over the unit five times in five years and end up with a fifty percent higher rent.
Fifty percent.
And plus, it's, it's more of a rent increase than the system, I think, is intended to provide. You know, I don't think you intend to allow the rents to go up that much in five years.
In addition, I think that the tenants in Maryland don't have the same protections that they have in DC where the landlord does have the right to get possession of the unit at the end of the lease term, and the claim of retaliation is not a reason for, you know, giving back the possession to the tenant, to the landlord. So there, there is more protection in DC on that.
Any other, anything else on that item?
If I can just make the comment that various times as people talk about what people could do if some restraints were removed, and the example just now was, well, if it was five vacancies in five years, ten percent a year, the rent could go up fifty percent, that's assuming that the market would bear that, that increase, which is not at all a sure thing.
Right, but certainly, I mean, a few times, it could be turned over more frequently.
Yes.
I mean, three times.
I understand the point, I just want to make sure everybody doesn't start thinking about these whopping increases that couldn't happen because they, nobody would pay that much.
Well, the tighter the rents get, the problem is it forces people into, into situations where it's not, I mean, it's a constrained market, and they can't push things up higher faster. Okay, it seems like there's, there's general.
Confusion.
No, I was gonna say, I think there's, there's general agreement that if we do that, there have to be constraints on it. Is that sort of where we, where we are?
Yeah.
Okay, if we do it, there are constraints.
But there's also a need for additional thought on that.
Yes.
So it would be helpful to have collective wisdom back with some constraints that would make sense.
Okay. And then the recommendation, your recommendation number eight, which is the unused increases in the rent stabilization ceiling.
Okay, I'd say qualification of that in the sense that now when I see what the, how many units in the city have a rent gap, which was, you know, much greater than I could have imagined, my feeling is that, you know, maybe that would take up, provide a lot of the, if that, if you, under your present system, that provides a type of vacancy increase, if you follow what I'm saying? Because somebody can raise the rent to the current ceiling, to this ceiling, so I'm not, I certainly wouldn't recommend that you do the vacancy increase, and people could take their unused rent increase allowances, take both of them, because then there'd be a big gap between the rent if you get the tenant out and the rent you can charge now.
Okay, so you're saying that if, that in essence, the increase on vacancy and the use of, use of the unused increases during the tenancy would have to go together, or else it creates a huge incentive to get the tenant out of there?
Right.
Okay.
Mayor Porter?
Yes.
Doctor Barr, I wonder if, hearing that information you have, the statistics you have on, basically, let me summarize what you're saying, is that landlords right now, a significant percentage of them do not charge rent as high as what they are allowed to charge under the rent stabilization law.
Right.
Right? And so what that sounds to me like is that we're spending a lot of time to address an issue that isn't an issue, right? I mean, the complaint has been that, that this is, rent stabilization is overly controlling the rents on the apartments, not allowing, not providing a fair return, is I think the term we've heard from landlords. And I wonder, I mean, I don't doubt what landlords are saying, but I wonder if the numbers you have could be related to something that shows why some people aren't charging as much rent as they could, while at the same time, other people are saying that it's prohibitive in their operating of business. You know, is it based on number of units in the building, is there some other characteristic?
That, that I don't, that I don't know yet without spending more time going through the data.
And maybe the landlords have a, have an input on that.
Because rent control, because if you have a cap that's greater than the rent that you're charging the tenant, you can only raise the tenant's rent one and a half or two percent a year, but your cap is higher, your cap continues to float up while the rent that you can actually charge remains below the cap. So that's why you'll have that gap.
Okay.
Until, until there's a vacancy. I mean, once there's a vacancy and the vacancy based on, you know, the tenant giving notice to leave or because of a, you know, breach in the lease, then the rent could be increased to that allowable.
Does that mean there's already a fair amount of pressure for vacancy from the landlord's perspective?
Well, I don't think, well, the data I have is, you know, I'd say about half the units have a gap of thirty dollars or less, and I don't think that creates a lot of pressure, because I'm, just the cost of turnover is significant, and the cost of, you know, pushing a tenant out, and plus, there's a stake in keeping good tenants.
But that's thirty dollars a month, right?
Right. And most of those, half of the, you know, I say thirty dollars or less for, you know, half the units, and for half of that half, it's less than, or it's, or more than half of that half, it's ten dollars or less.
And what is it for above?
Okay, what I have is for thirty to thirty-nine units, it's about a hundred and eighty, thirty to thirty-nine dollars, the gap's about a hundred, for about a hundred and eighty units, forty to forty-nine dollars, and we'll write this up, it's, it's about a hundred, forty to forty-nine is about a hundred and thirty-seven units, the gap, fifty dollars to fifty-nine dollars, it's a hundred and twenty-eight units, sixty to seventy-nine dollars, it's two hundred and sixty-four units, and eighty to ninety-nine dollars, it's two hundred and twenty-six units.
There are a number of properties that had significant renovations, and those larger gaps, for instance, two properties on Houston, Houston Avenue, for instance, that had significant renovations, which would have, they would have applied for capital improvement petitions, they would have gotten very large increases based on those capital improvement petitions, but now those properties are exempt. But that would have created a very large gap between what the current rent was, that these nonprofit housing, you know, organizations are charging their tenants, and what the allowable is on those units. So, you know, I think we probably need to look into this a little bit more before we, we decide that that is a major issue. I don't know.
Yeah, and I think it's also important to mention, if I can just follow up on that, that with the exception of the cases that you're talking about, the reason that there's a gap in the first place is because a property owner has chosen not to increase the rents. It's not like people are being forced into it, people get an increase that they choose not to take, and, and that's why there's a gap in the first place.
I see a disagreement with that, but I don't understand why, could we ask some clarification?
But let's, if we want to have a discussion, I think we have to sort of have this discussion, and I would be happy to get.
Can you explain the disagreement then?
There's going to be disagreement on every single point we make, and I, and I don't want to stop.
I'm just trying to understand the difference between the cap and the, the amount that's charged in rent.
Maybe Sarah can clarify it, Forrest.
There are a couple of options, or possibilities, as Linda indicated, there's approval of capital rent, capital improvements that have not been taken for one reason or another, they may have made it entered into agreement with the tenant.
Or there's a limit on how fast we let people take those improvements, yes.
There may have been a change over in the ownership of the property, and the previous landlord elected not to take those increases for one reason or another, and because the tenant is still in place, the new property owner cannot increase the rent to the maximum allowable, which would then also increase the gap between the two. Frequently, people elect not to take the full increase because of concerns regarding the turnover of the unit, or that there may be some type of arrangement between the property owner and the tenant regarding the maintenance of the building, or they service their agent. That's generally for smaller properties.
Okay, can you go to that first one and, and help me understand that? People have gone through a capital.
If you've gone, and do you, if you've gone through the capital improvement process, and you've made significant improvements to your property, say it results in an additional cost or need for operating revenue of eighty dollars per unit, per rent, per month for rent for that particular unit, but because there is a limit in terms of the amount of increase that you can take each year, you may have to take that increase over a period of years, so that you only do twenty dollars the first year. So that you only do twenty dollars the first year, another twenty the second, until you get the full increase in the rent.
How long would that take?
It depends on the, the extent of the improvements.
So we, when the capital improvement petition is received and who, someone at the city level would decide how to phase it in if it was approved?
All of the capital improvement petitions we get are verified by a construction manager, goes out to verify that the work has been done, that the costs are reasonable, and then the documentation is forwarded over to a rent analyst to use CPA.
I'm just wondering how it gets phased in?
And they go through and look at the cost, and there's a limit, it's fifteen percent per year, so that...
There's a law, there's a limit.
There's a law.
Right, in the, in the, in the current law.
You can only go up to fifteen percent, you can only impose a fifteen percent rent increase per year for a capital improvement or a hardship rent increase petition. Now, if your improvement results in a rent increase of fifty percent, you have to phase it in over a period of time, because the maximum that you can increase the rent is a fifteen.
Okay, so then that would be fifteen, 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 and five.
What if...
They could, they could do it that way, or they, you know, might just choose to take a certain percentage that first year and put the rest in the allowable.
And what would that mean?
That would mean that they wouldn't be able to take that increase until the unit became vacant.
Okay.
Well, so that we don't go off in an unproductive, unproductive direction, these, these variables that you suggest seem to indicate that what the data do not say is that the ability of the landlords to make a fair return is not at the discretion of the landlord, right?
There are occasions when it's not at the discretion of the landlord.
And are those, I mean, for the purposes of this conversation, it's, it sounds like the, that most of the instances are not at the discretion of the landlord, is what I'm, although we don't know for sure. It sounds like, given all of these variables, that most of the instances are, are not, do not reflect the inability of the landlord based on their, based on an action that they would take, that they're...
That is...
Let me rephrase, let me rephrase it. It, it doesn't sound like it's the intention of the landlords not to make a fair return because they're not collecting the full amount that they're able to.
Correct.
Go ahead, Terry.
Did you want to, uh...
Yeah, I just wanted to respond, except you, you have a, you know, more than half the units and the rent controlled units in the city is a gap. And the, and certainly, I don't think more than half of the units in the city have gotten some kind of capital improvement increase. So there is discretion.
So there would be multiple factors, it's not just the capital improvement.
Right, it's not just that. Okay.
We've also been, if I could just say one additional thing, I'm sorry, Terry.
Okay.
We've all been told in the past that some property owners choose not to give or choose not to give the full allowable increase to long-term tenants as a way of reducing turnover and maintaining what they consider to be good tenants. Go ahead.
Thank you. All right, my recollection is that we've had few hardship petitions in recent history.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is more a theoretical way that these numbers could be as great as they are? That the hardship petition or the capital improvement?
Well, there've been more capital improvement petitions, very few hardship.
Okay, so the capital improvement petitions are the way that this would, would happen, are one of the possible ways. And another way, you said these numbers may include units that are owned by nonprofits? Is that what you were saying, Linda?
Right, well, well, some of the properties are purchased by nonprofits that, you know, had total rehabs and stuff.
Okay, so that may unfairly skew these numbers, because they just flat don't want to increase because they're, they're restricted by some other lending authority or some other way. And then there are, as has been said, there are special tenants. I mean, there are relationships where the landlord, for whatever reasons, wants to be fair to a tenant or some other reason, doesn't increase the, the tenant's rent. But then when that unit becomes available, are they able to go to the maximum allowable on vacancy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. And I, I'm sorry, if I may, may I?
Sure.
The, the number you have, although they may be a little skewed now with the nonprofits in there, I wonder if we could maybe get a copy when you feel comfortable with the numbers? Thank you.
Yeah, I'll say one thing, because I don't think I was quite completely clear. I think in my report here, I indicated maybe that people should be able to take unused rent increases now rather than waiting till there's a vacancy. But now when I see their, how widespread they are in all the other issues, I'm not sure that's a wise policy. So I'd say, you know, for number five, you know, here's something I discussed in the past, but the data shows me something a lot different than I expected.
But, but in your, in your comments just a few minutes ago, you linked that to the increases upon vacancy and said that it would be an important way to reduce the incentive to try and push people out so they could take an increase on vacancy.
Well, okay, that, yes, and that's a counterbailing thing, but I...
But maybe where that gets us, if I can take another step, is that that sort of, it sounds like the increases on vacancy may not therefore be as important.
It sounds to me like this is in the same boat as number four on the vacancy decontrol and that is, it's not ready for prime time.
Right, but I'm just, I think that the more sort of, even if we don't call for the definitive answer, the more sense of where we are, we give the staff and Dr. Barr, you know, the easier the next step will be.
I think looking at these numbers, as well as many other numbers, would be very helpful. So as soon as they're available, if they could come to the council and for our review, I'd appreciate that.
Okay, I would agree with Terry. I think there's some concerns about the fourth, I'm talking about the numbers as they're here on the blue sheet, the fourth one, the fifth one, and the, and the fourth one and how the two of them go together. So let's take up the last one that we're going to be discussing this evening, which is the annual registration fee. Do you want to give us your very brief summary?
Okay, well, one option I mentioned was, I mean, a lot of cities in California or other places in the country, they do have an annual administrative fee that's paid for each rental unit. And that's paid by the apartment owner, but then is passed through to the resident on a monthly basis, prorated. And I'd say it's, but that's really a, you know, a policy issue whether that, I think that more money needs to be provided, because now one percent of the city budget is used for administering the rent stabilization program, rent control program, and it has an impact on a large percentage of this population in the city, I think about half. And that's whether you take it out of the city budget or do it through a registration fee. I mean, my feeling is in one way or another, it should happen. And whether, which way you choose is a policy issue, so I wouldn't say one way is right or wrong.
So, so you're suggesting we should spend more money in administering this program? And one way to do it would be this annual registration fee on individual units?
Right.
There, there was a sense in some of the comments that we got that this was somehow a tax or something that was levied on tenants, that we were making the landlords collect. My understanding is that your recommendation was that it would simply be a fee assessed on the property owner. And the property owner could pass it along to the tenants, but they wouldn't have to. If they had a tenant they didn't want to raise their rent on or something, they could choose to pay it themselves, I suppose. It's not, it's not something that we're making the landlords collect on our behalf.
Well, I, I think the, well, except landlords are being asked to pay this.
Right.
And they're, you know, but it's, it's really something that's, you know, charged to the tenants.
That's right.
And so in a way it is, but it's too complicated. You couldn't bill every tenant in the city. And I don't think it's a real, I mean, when I've seen in other places, it hasn't been real burdensome.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear you say that you wanted the city to spend more money on this and so this would be a way to...
Well, I, I was recommending that there be more, more funds spent on the administration of the program.
Okay.
And I think also when you, you know, depending on what policies you adopt, in some ways there will be, you know, more administrative work to do in terms of if you adopt some kind of vacancy increase. And also, I just think that this is a major policy in the city that has a huge impact and having as much information, because here, for example, we're discussing a lot of alternatives, but there's a lot of data we just, you know, we don't have yet.
Okay, and so this, this fee idea seems to me could be combined with the inspection, the licensing fee. Is there any reason that it would need to be kept separate from that?
Um, it depends, it's my understanding that the fees have to be tied to the cost of administering the program. They're not necessarily intended as a revenue generator. I mean, you could link it to the licensing billing process, but it would be definitely a separate fee.
Okay. I remember when we reviewed that issue, my understanding was the majority of the council did not want to raise it to recover all costs. So we are not right now recovering costs.
For the co-portion? For the, you are pretty much covering all your costs for the rental housing licensing program.
But not for...
Not for the commercial, the commercial licensing fee does not cover the cost. I understand, yeah. The other thing that we wouldn't be able to increase the rental licensing fee to cover this cost is that not all of the licensed rental units are subject to rent stabilization and they're, they're not the same associated program now.
And so it would, it would be attached to licensing fees only if they were under rent stabilization?
It would only be the rent stabilized rent improvements.
I'd be interested in knowing what the real costs are. That is, of the increased costs for administering the program, whatever the program is as defined, we're not recovering costs for the existing costs of managing the program, which some have estimated may be a million dollars or more. Therefore, if there's going to be additional costs in administering some of the proposals that are, have been discussed here and that we'll be deciding, oh, do we, can we identify what those costs are? You've thrown out, Dr. Barr, a number, two hundred thousand or whatever, but I wonder if it's possible to get a better handle on what the real costs are likely to be?
Just as point of information, the last time we actually broke down the cost of the rent stabilization program is about two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand, so not a million.
It's not that.
Um, the, I'm willing to continue this discussion, but I don't think it's unfair that the tax base pay for a portion of the cost of the rent stabilization program. Dr. Barr made the point, and I think it's exactly right, that this is half of the households in the city. And they do pay taxes, and so I don't think it's unreasonable that the tax base pay for a portion of it.
Can I just ask, how do they pay taxes?
How do, how do they, no, the, the point that Dr. Barr is making, I think, if I'm understanding, is that right now, the bulk of the costs of administering rent stabilization come out of our regular general operating budget.
Right.
Which is primarily based on property taxes. And so it comes out of our basic property tax base. And the point that I'm making is that if you look at the individuals, about half of the, if you look at families, about half of the families or half of the housing units in the city are rental households. Actually, it's over half. And so it doesn't seem unreasonable to me to have the overall tax base pay for a service which is actually a service to more than half of the households in the city. That's the point that I'm making.
And if, if I can just make the plea that as staff comes back with information and as we consider our options, that the easiest way to hold down the cost is to make the regulations that we implement, simplify and not needing a lot of staff work to oversee them. And then we won't have to worry about that issue as much.
And just following on Councilmember Williams' comments, I know that, you know, you had looked at, made suggestions and recommendations for changes to the rent stabilization with a view in making it a, I think, a fairer system to landlords without being unfair to tenants. Seems to be the goal of most of your, of your suggestions. And yet I don't know if you've looked at streamlining the, the law to make it simpler for staff? Yeah?
Yeah, okay. I think, um, I have, I mean, that's been objective, sort of, by object, making the rent increase process, you know, more based just on very simple objective factors, whether the unit became vacant, if you adopt that, changing the annual increase, not having so many capital improvement increases. And I think my reaction was as far as there'd be some increased cost, but I'd also say the budget now is very small considering the task that is being performed of administering a rent control law. So, I mean, even whether or not there was a change or not in the law, it's just very small and, you know, and affects how much, you know, data is collected, how much can be done to monitor the pro, you know, how the program's working. It's a major policy issue.
Okay.
But I certainly, yeah, I mean, my goal has been to make this as objective as possible. And in some ways, it will reduce costs, but there are, there will be some types of costs that will be increased, but it's to make it.
And, and I, I would agree with you. I, I do believe that the proposals you've made, particularly the, sort of the, the crux of the, the central ones about doing annual increases that are slightly larger, eliminating capital improvement petitions and sort of expanding and simplifying the hardship process, or whatever you, what you call it, the, maintenance of net operating income process. Maintenance of net operating income process. I think all of those things will fundamentally simplify the rent stabilization program. And I do think that that's got to have an impact on what the staff has to do. So, I think we have made some progress, if, if only identifying some of the areas that we've got to tackle. But I think in accepting the basic crux of your proposal, I think that has been some progress also. Are you all clear on where we are right now and can sort of proceed with that? Okay. Anybody else? I, I'll let you make a, a one-minute comment, very quickly, since we said the council seems to have finished its discussion.
One of the biggest issues here that I thought the council was going to address that was not part of Dr. Barr's charge necessarily is you've got landlords, landlords who are not making enough to maintain the properties in the conditions that a lot of the tenants and I think the city would like. Of the items that the council's just gone through, I've heard a lot of things that I think are based on a fundamental misunderstanding of how things work. But you've got one item that Dr. Barr says enhances rents by about one percent per year. You're not increasing the revenues for the landlords. And I understand that may be the objective of some of you, but you're not going to solve a lot of your problems. And as far as the number of capital improvement petitions, if a landlord ever has an incentive to do a capital improvement project ever again, they will immediately file a maintenance of net operating income petition. And you're gonna have just as many as you did when you had capital improvement petition.
Thank you. Yes, Terry.
Just one comment. I saw as this was coming on our agenda, it, I think it's been a, a good discussion. I appreciate that. But I'm concerned that we don't have a Ward Four council member at the table tonight. And a significant, or a Ward Five, I'm sorry. I guess I am here, but I'm not sure sometimes.
We're doing it in the margin of time, Terry.
And, and that's a significant percentage of the rental units and the controlled units in the city. And I would like to suggest that we don't go further with this discussion until we do have a Ward Five council member at the table.
Unfortunately, we've had, over the last year, I guess, or year and a half, two years maybe, a lot of turnover in the council, first in Ward Two and now in Ward Five. years maybe, a lot of turnover in the council, first in Ward Two and now in Ward Five. And initially, I did want to wait until we had a permanent council member in Ward Two. I guess at this point, I'm concerned that if we, if we stop each time there's an issue like that, we're never going to finish, and I really would like to finish. I issued an invitation to Mark Elrich to come and speak to us if he wanted to. I believe they have a council, a county council public hearing. I've invited him to, to send us his thoughts. As of the 12th, I think of February, we will have a Ward Five council member. And I think we just have to, to go ahead and proceed. You know, obviously, that person will be there before we vote on anything, and I would give them the opportunity to discuss or bring up any issues they wanted to bring up. But I'm really concerned, given how long it's taken us so far, that we stopped for another reason. So I'm going to encourage the council to move forward, although, as you can tell from the discussion here, we're hardly doing it precipitously. Anything else? Well, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned. And I want to thank you, Dr. Barr, again for your being here. I think this has been quite helpful, and it sounds like we've thrown enough tasks back at you that will probably keep you busy for a while. And I will consult with you, or consult with the staff, will consult with you about, you know, when we should schedule-